Carl, would you just go to that corner seat?
We're on. If everybody could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. And also, after we're through with the pledge, if you could just remain standing for a moment to honor the tragic, horrific incident that occurred in Las Vegas and all the people who lost their lives.
Like a full minute, maybe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, good morning. It's Wednesday, October 4th, 2017. It's 10:00 a.m. This is the regular general meeting for the Currie County Board of Commissioners. We'll go to any amendments, and I believe it's Commissioner Boyce will go first today. Commissioner Boyce, do you have any amendments?
Yes, and I'd like to give a quick fire report, if I may.
We'll leave that for the end, under Commissioner Comments, please.
We're gonna go through that again.
Yes, sir.
So, Tetco Bar Fire, $66 million.
Is this an amendment, Commissioner?
No, no, it's about a two-minute presentation on the fire, which is-
Do you have, Commissioner Boyce, do you have any amendments?
If he gavels me, you're gonna have to decide if you want a recess, Commissioner Gold.
We will. I've been through this with Mr. Hitt.
So, you've conferred with Administrator Hitt?
I have. For the general subject, we're gonna follow the agenda. You come first for amendments to the agenda. Do you have any?
So, I'm gonna stand down, because you have your personal priorities and I have my people's priorities.
Correct. And him and the Commissioner.
Shocking. So, first of the agenda amendments, Board. At the 9/20 meeting, you mentioned a county travel policy. I'd like to know if we can combine 9A travel policy and 9E, or 9F, excuse me, designation of a vehicle for myself.
I would prefer not to and keep the travel policy separate, Commissioner.
It's all on the same issue?
Different documents, different...
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Huxley.
Okay. Mr. Huxley, you mentioned on the 9/20 meeting that you referenced Kathleen, Catherine, excuse me, Wiley. Was there a reason you mentioned her? Is she gonna speak today on this issue?
I don't know. She had sent an email in, and that's why I referenced her, rather than an anonymous email.
That's the agenda. Well, if it's not an anonymous email, how can we haven't seen that?
All you have to do is ask for it. I didn't think-
I didn't know there was an email to ask for. Thank you.
It was identified, Commissioner.
So, you answered my question. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Then if we go to items, excuse me, back to the front page, 3F on the agenda, that was marked as there was a legal question. And also, since County Council is unable to be here today, I wonder if we should defer or continue that to another meeting.
Administrator Hitt, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I think any legal question has been resolved. Looked up the county code, and the county code specifically exempts from any type of public notice or public hearing fees established by state or federal law or agencies, so, which is the case here.
So, you're comfortable with that?
I am.
Great. And no need to pull it out of the consent calendar. The only other thing I have is 6A and 6B at the bottom of the agenda routing slips that references or attaches Commissioner Boyce to these two items, which is not a big deal, except I'm not a liaison for Board of Property Tax Appeals, nor the Cuse-Curry Housing Authority, that I'm aware. It might have been a mistake that my name was actually... Go ahead.
Administrator Hitt?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize to Commissioner Boyce. Unfortunately, in our current form, it doesn't have a place for me to check off.
Okay.
So, I kind of abused you, because I think you, I heard you in the office behind me, so I figured, well, I gotta use somebody. And I meant to coordinate with you, and I didn't, so...
Absolutely no worries, and next time, you can go ahead and do the same, and I'll know why.
Okay.
That's all I have, Board.
Commissioner Gold?
I don't have any.
Mr. Chair, me, and I know I don't have the authority to propose amendments, but if you would consider a special presentation after we're done with this part of the agenda, then I would like to make a special presentation, if that's okay with you and the other Commissioner?
To whom or for whom?
For Julie Swift.
Okay. Do you Commissioners have any?
By all means.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to, just one comment or to remove, and for a reason here, on the consent calendar, under the minutes, on A and B, I had spoken with Clerk John Jesuit on this to earlier last week, about midweek, Wednesday, I believe. And were the minutes on a folder anywhere where we could access them in a Word document and make suggested changes? He said, "Not at that point." We talked about making arrangements to do that for all meetings. In this case, rather than consume time at this meeting in going through suggested changes I have on one of these, and possibly both, but on one of the meetings for sure, I would ask that we pull them from this meeting in the next week or in the next few days, arrange, if it has not already been done, by John Jesuit, to put these in Word document format, not in a final PDF, for Commissioners, and just get a little trickle file so that they can be notified, or we can be notified, as additional meetings are added, so that we can go in and make any corrections, suggested corrections, in red, or, you know, I think that's how we did it in the past years, rather than waste time discussing details on that, going back and forth and back and forth during the meeting. So, I would request that, and then we have these two, and hopefully more, come up at the next general meeting under consent calendar.
I agree with that.
So, is this, could you clarify the future approach to doing minutes? And I'll tell you why I ask.
What had been done in the past, and when we did have the few minutes that were done, was that the minutes in a Word document, so we could go in and make suggested changes, we, the Commissioners, in reviewing of the minutes, was placed on a particular, in a particular folder, on a particular drive, that the Commissioners have access to, so that we could do that in the future.
I'd like to have this discussion now, because I have just a short opinion on that. With the video access and in backup stories, I think we have through Grant Media, I don't think we need to use so much of John Jesuit's time in writing these minutes. And I'm a little nervous having the Commissioners go in, and I just don't see it as a high priority, and I see it as a waste. And when we can, there's a system that we could do that would basically calculate, I mean, the videos are word for word, I just don't know how it could be any more clear than that, unless there's some risk of losing those minutes. I just think it's a waste of his time, and I think we could find more important things for him to do.
Commissioner Gold?
I think it's state law that we have to have written minutes, and they have to be kept in perpetuity.
The state of Oregon at the Capitol does not have any written minutes. They have it all archived in the legislative offices. That is, of course... What's that? So, they do have written minutes?
That is not correct either, from the audience. Again, I don't wanna consume a lot of time here. I've gone through this with Administrator Hitt. I've referenced the Oregon statutes, and what's more detail and becomes from a period of years for governing bodies, which this is, a governing body of a county. You get into the Oregon administrative rules also, and the sections 18 or 19 under 150, 005 or 0005, or, I'm not sure the number I provided, I think requires that they be permanent on it. So, there's a conflict there, but the OARs are permanent, and it can be very timely, very consuming. And this comes also from the archive director from the state of Oregon, Mary Herkert, I believe is her name. So, Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, there's no way, if we try and go in as Commissioners and arbitrarily amend the minutes, there's no way. The video and the minutes are gonna match up, and it's gonna be a mess. And I'm gonna stake my claim that it's a waste of time, and besides, in the past, I think there's good documentation, that you have had access, and you've spent a lot of time amending those minutes, and it's been under, not the most, perhaps not the most proper way to do it. And so, the video speaks loudly on the best way to go. And again, that's why the state of Oregon does that, and I think most states, in fact, do that.
And the states-
Legislatures. Yes, I'm done.
We have more Oregon administrative rules. Again, we need to move on. Also identifies that after you have, as a governing body, with permanent record requirements of the Oregon administrative rules, after you've done the minutes, you then are required for a minimum of one year to keep the audio or video that you used. After that, you may dispose of that, but the permanent written record takes precedent. Administrator Hitt?
Just some generic comments, not specifically to what you proposed, Chairman Huxley. Just generically, in my experience, I've never known a governing body not to maintain written minutes. And my understanding, and I'll double-check and recheck and see if there's been any changes, or I misread it, but my understanding is that we are required to keep written minutes. However, what is included in those minutes, all that's required, and I use the word "all" here carefully, is what actions the Board has taken. So, you passed a resolution, or you defeated a resolution, you passed an ordinance, you defeated an ordinance, amended an ordinance, whatever it may be. So, your actual actions taken, along with a brief summary of the discussion. Now, John and I, John Jesuit and I, have had several discussions informally about how much of that brief discussion should be included. So, and I mentioned it yesterday briefly to Commissioner Huxley. So, what I would like to propose is, and I've already got a copy of the minutes that are in your thing here, a printed copy from May 3rd, is to go through that and give what I would call a more condensed version of those minutes, that obviously shows all your actions, you know, what you approved and what you disapproved, but also then gives a brief summary of the discussion, along with the minute tag to the video, so that if anybody wants to know-
There's the key, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, yeah. So, if anybody wants to know, well, Chair, from my discussion, I say Commissioner Boyce voiced opposition to XYZ ordinance, because he thinks it is a waste of money, or whatever. Well, he said a lot more than that.
Are we talking about the travel policy now?
Yeah, well, yeah. Not intentionally. But, so then, well, if Commissioner Boyce says, "Well, I said a lot more than that," how come, you know, so, but it'll be in the tag to the video, and then the video can go show. Now, you still have the option, when it comes, those minutes, when they come to you, obviously, and I'd like to just give you a couple samples first, and if you, and the last comment, generic comment about minutes, is the minutes are the creation of the Board, of the governing Board. So, some governing boards, in my experience, like more detailed minutes, some governing boards, less detailed minutes. That's ultimately the choice of the three of you, as to how detailed those minutes need to be. But let me try a couple minutes where I give you my idea of what's a condensed version, and still gives adequate flesh, if you will, to the minutes, so everybody kind of knows and understands what people's viewpoints were, besides just the raw vote total. And then, you know, I'll give a couple trials of those, and you three can discuss, well, that's enough or not enough, or we'd like to have a little more here, or a little less someplace else, so...
Now, will that still, because again, I go back to what had been done that seemed to work well in prior years, when they were done, was they were placed for Commissioners to look at. It wasn't that you could change and not, nobody know what you did. They were highlighted in a different color, that you did that outside the meeting, rather than take all the time to do that inside the meeting.
Right, and I appreciate the goal of shortening the minutes. And I think I would be fine with that, as long as we had and could set it up, or each Commissioner respected that, here's Thomas Huxley's comments or proposed additions.
That's the way it was set up before.
Here's-
Each Commissioner's was separate.
Yeah. And then, John and I can work and say, "Okay, you know, we got a little conflict here between what Commissioner Gold has proposed versus what we see on the videotape," and then bring it back in the form of-
Then it should be smooth and without little or no discussion?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I think we would be fine with that.
So, are we all right to remove these two?
I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're gonna remove... We're gonna remove 3A and 3B and bring them back at a future date, rather than lock ourselves in, but at a future date.
Probably be next meeting, next regular meeting.
Okay.
I'll just add one thing.
Okay, Commissioner Boyce?
Just a thank you letter to Brookings. We don't need to read that, but it'd be nice to additionally send them a letter regarding the EOC facility and how handy that came in for the fire. It was just a tremendous asset to the county and-
That's true.
-the city of Brookings, and just the whole process. So, I think, yes, a thank you letter there would be in order as well.
Okay, so, we've, we have a motion to approve the amendments as discussed here?
I so move.
Second.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, going down then to consent calendar, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar to include what is now 3C, D, E, F, and G?
I so move.
Second.
Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry for my interruption.
No, no, that's fine.
Point of order of special presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Let me amend my motion to include the special presentation.
Well, now, that's a, oh, yes, correct, correct. But that was as discussed, but I went on for approval of the consent calendar. We should have-
Oh, that's right.
-gone back. So, we're okay with approval of the consent calendar. We'll go back now then to Administrator Hitt for the...
So, at this point, it's great pleasure, I take notice here, and award, certificate and a pin, says years of service. Currie County hereby recognizes Julie Swift for 20 years of service to the citizens of Currie County and the Departments of Payroll and Personnel. So, it's been my pleasure, short time I've been here, to get to know Julie and some of her coworkers, and I appreciate Julie's focus and dedication, and want to recognize her at this time. Julie, please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. John Jesuit, do we have any speaker slips?
Hey, Long Arms.
Thank you. Okay, we have five speaker slips. Three are on topics on the agenda, so we'll wait for those topics. We have, the first public speaker that is not on a topic that we have on the agenda would be Connie Hunter, so if you want to come forward and...
Thank you. I'm Connie Hunter, and I'm from Currie County, Oregon. And today, I'd like to do a little follow-up on the Symposium on Suicide, which, by the way, community building is a lot harder than it looks, and it's more expensive than most rural cities and counties can really muster. So, people like Gordon Clay, U.S. veteran Gordon Clay, go the extra mile beyond advocacy to bring the work and the sound representation of good information to the community. The Symposium on Suicide, there were a lot of wonderful materials there. Gordon paid for all of those things out of his pocket. He won't tell you that, but that's what commitment beyond advocacy is. It goes into action. I believe that the Symposium on Suicide was very successful. It was well-attended. The panel was great. A special thank you to all who took the time to be on the panel. Ginny Rosso, Sheriff Ward, thank you for being there. Aaron Porter, Commissioner Cork Boyce actually got deployed from the audience onto the panel, and he rose to the occasion. Tim Wilson, Gold Beach High School. Scott Graves, Paulie Hawthorne, Talawoodanai Tribe Family Services. Kurt Rossbach, who's from the VA. And Ken Duquet was there visiting. I couldn't have been prouder of that panel. I think that we met some of our goals in realizing two things. We still have lots more work to do, and that leaders are dealing in a different currency. It's called hope. So, our leaders are our hope dealers around here, so we like to hear from them in times of crisis. I wanted to mention a few things. I'm going to include the most current information on veteran suicide in Oregon, and the VA has a lot more emphasis on dealing with suicide. I will send that information. It's too much to go over here, but I'll send that to everyone at the Board of Commissioners and anybody else that would like materials on the current Oregon Veteran Suicide Data Sheet, which just came out at the beginning of this month. Let me know, and I'll make sure you get that information. I don't know where Currie County's gonna rank. In the past, in 2013, we ranked highest among the counties in our state for suicide among our veterans. I feel like we have turned things forward in a better way, but I know of at least two suicides this year among our veterans, and I found out Saturday about a suicide after attending the Suicide Symposium. So, keep our veterans in your hearts, in your prayers, and in your thoughts. Let's deal hope at this time when we've had a crisis, and that can bring on stress, and that can trigger all sorts of things. And people with PTSD, people without PTSD, hard financial things can put us into a place, going into the winter, where it's difficult. Let's keep mental health and mental health among our veterans and their family members at the top of the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
The next speaker is David Barnes, and it's-
I'm gonna pass for now, sir.
Okay, so, but is this, you said public comment again. I know the last time we asked, it was on the public comments.
I'm just gonna pass for now. I just don't have anything to say right now.
Okay. Okay, there are no presentations on administrative actions. We have, which is Agenda Item 6, we have 6A, which is Appointment and Order for the Board of Property Tax Appeals. Did you want to make any comment, or do we just basically have a-
Yeah, we have-
-a motion-
Yeah, just a-
-to approve?
That's correct, a motion to approve. There is a, and approve the, there's a board order attached to this.
Basically, this was, and I think we touched on it at the last general meeting, typically the reason that they, that there are two-year, there's an online test, and then you have a full day's training for the, to be basically approved to be a member of the Board of Property Tax Appeals. And the individuals, there were three, there was, there was two laypeople persons, and then a standing commissioner typically. We had just had our last year, was our first year, so it made sense to continue, because then no additional training or certifications are required. So, it would be for the existing lay members, David Griffith and Brent Thompson, and then myself as the Commissioner, to appoint us for the, this coming year. And we would hold those, I think, it's, well, in early 2018 is when we, is when we hear any of those appeals. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the appointments of Commissioner Huxley, David Griffith, and Brent Thompson to the Board of Property Tax Appeals.
I will second that.
Okay, any further conversation on that? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. On the Agenda Item 6B is the Appointment Order for Cuse-Curry Housing Authority. There is an open, there is an application, a committee application that is open. And let me just ask a question, if I may, and I'll address this to Administrator Hitt. There were three applications, there's one opening. What confused me is the order, or resolution, I'm not sure what the document was, already has one of their names filled in, and I don't understand why.
It does. I thought you might question that. My usual, my past experience on these, for the Boards and Commissions and Committees that have a vacancy, where there's more than one person applying, the normal procedure, at least in my experience, is to check with the chairperson of that committee to see if they have a recommendation or a suggestion, and then look at the applicants myself, and if I agree, I think that's a rational, well-supported recommendation, then to just go ahead and make that recommendation to the governing body. Obviously, you, as the governing body, have the power to appoint any one of these applicants. It was felt that Anthony, right?
Aaron.
Yeah, Anthony Barron had the most relevant experience, both in education and in work- both in education and in work experience, to be the most valuable. And I'm not saying all three of these wouldn't do a great job, but he seemed to have the most relevant experience in education training for that position.
Thank you for the explanation. That certainly answered my question.
And after reading the applications, I agree that I apologize.
Commissioner Boyce?
I'd love to make a recommendation, but I'm afraid I would doom them, so. Your recommendation, what was the name again, Anthony?
Anthony Baron.
Baron.
Baron, thank you.
And I believe it was the first application, I'm not positive, but I think it was, the first one. Not the first one that was submitted, but I think it was the last one that was submitted, actually.
Yeah, it was submitted August 23rd.
So, Mr. Chair?
So still well before the cutoff.
Sure, Commissioner Boyce?
I know Lauren Paulson, and I know his work in housing, certainly with the veterans. He has been a community-minded person for a long time, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint him to the KUS Curry Housing Authority Board.
Commissioner Gold, did you have any comments first?
I was just, I was just going to say, I read through all of the applications. And Tony Baron, I would have to agree that was the most qualified, in my opinion.
Okay, would you second Commissioner Boyce's motion, or not?
No.
Okay, I have the same feelings, Commissioner Boyce. Because I've seen, he has been present, Lauren, at a lot of these meetings. I can't, I'm not aware of the other qualifications. I would still, with that said, go with what the recommendation is, but I share your, you know, I think we could have two very qualified applicants here, that's...
Well, you could second it, then.
Yeah. But I think, again, I agree with Administrator Hit's rationale that had been, you know, and the research that had been done first. So I would not, for that reason, but not that I don't agree, certainly in part with what you said.
So I make a motion to approve Anthony Baron for the appointment for KUS Curry Housing Authority.
Okay. Would you second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, yes. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, I agree with your thought process completely. Okay, there's no public hearing. Let's move to, which was Agenda Item 7, let's move to Agenda Item 8. What I didn't do, and I should have, when we first started the meeting, as far as present, we did have interim Administrator Hit, Commissioner Gold, myself, Commissioner Huxley, Commissioner Boyce. County Council Huddle has called in ill, and so for the record, that he is not present. And then we have the Board Clerk, John Jesuit. On old business, 8, there's one item, there's Curry County, Curry Community Health, property exchange review, and this is for John Hit as the administrator. And I don't know, I don't see Ken Duquet here, but this was basically, this document was a 20 or so-page property appraisal.
Inspection.
Inspection, a property inspection, not an appraisal. John?
So as you may recall, Commissioners, at your last regular meeting, you approved an exchange, property exchange of 1403 Oregon Street, Port Orford, currently owned by Curry County, for the property and building at 517 Railroad Avenue, Brookings, Oregon, currently owned by Curry County Health. You made that exchange contingent on two things, title search for the Brookings property and a inspection. So the inspection was done on the Brookings property on September 29th, and the inspection, excuse me, on September 27th. The one in the Port Orford, 1403 Oregon Street, wasn't until September 29th. So neither one of these were in time to implement the exchange by, the exchange agreement said it had to be implemented by, and completed by the 29th. So both Ken Duquet and I and Counselor John Huddle invoked the provision in that agreement to postpone the exchange for 30 days. So that was mutually agreed to between ourselves and CCH. So you also were, and it wasn't part of your packet, because we didn't have it then, but since then, were sent out, paid for by Curry County Health, the inspection report done by the same inspector of 1403 Oregon Street, Port Orford. Both inspection reports indicate a lot of issues with both buildings. Now, not that these issues are necessarily comparable by any means, either as far as their impact or their cost to address, but there were a total of 27 issues called out on the Port Orford property. And I think it's 31, I'll double-check here. 31, 31 issues or concerns called out on the Brookings inspection report. KUS Curry Health has fixed the most egregious, if you will, the most concerning. On the Brookings property was electrical problems. We have understood from Ken Duquet, those have been corrected by, at their expense. He has asked us to likewise take care of the electrical. There are two matters called out in the report concerning the electrical service there at the Port Orford property. Right now, Eric, our maintenance manager, is following up and checking that out and seeing what that might take. I don't believe if we went ahead with those corrections on the Port Orford building, that it would be very much cost associated with that. But Eric is confirming that, and I'll know more probably within just a day or two. In the meantime, we have until almost to the end of the month, based on the 30-day extension. So my intent is to go ahead with that exchange, assuming the electrical matters that Ken Duquet has asked us to fix on the Port Orford property are in fact relatively minimal cost. Again, I should know that for sure within the next day or two. But assuming they are, would be to go ahead with that exchange. Now, obviously, you as Commissioners, since you've seen the both reports, maybe you're feeling that you desire more information, so we could do follow-up reports with, as actually recommended by the inspector, with licensed roofing contractors, structural contractors, plumbers, and so on. Some of these follow-up inspections that he recommends. Or you could say, well, the two are kind of balanced out. They both have issues regarding their siding. They both have some issues regarding the roofing. They both have some issues regarding plumbing. The two kind of balance out. If the electrical is taken care of by both parties, it may be, you know, you may be comfortable with moving ahead. So that's the current status.
I don't need any more information. I think this is, we've spent a lot of time on this. It's a good deal for all concerned, and yeah, I think we've got other priorities. So thanks for the work you did. And by the way, when is the 30-day extension?
It would then be up, I think, on the 28th of this month.
Commissioner Gold?
Um, I, they both have issues, so I say let's just move ahead.
And I agree, but primarily, it was a standard sense that the inspector says, you know, to cover themselves, basically, to cover the inspector. Since you, you know, if the walls are covered, you should uncover the walls, you know.
Just FYI, our Veterans Department, Veterans Services Division here has already expressed an interest in the Brookings property. He, Tony, has a copy of this report. And I suggested to Tony that if there are possible VA grant monies or support to help take care of some of these building issues prior to him moving in, if it's a concern to him, then he should follow up accordingly, but...
So do we have a motion to direct Administrator Hit to continue as he has recommended?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, this wouldn't be delaying VSO Anthony Vought, would it?
No, I believe we can actually get the property exchange probably, I'm going to guess, within the next few days, week probably max.
Thank you.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the next item. And this is really the meat of the meeting, is in Agenda Item 9. 9A is a motion to direct staff regarding the travel policy and supporting documents. And this was put on by myself. I'm going to ask John Jesuit if we can just get through Charles so I can put up one document on the screen. Hey, John, could you just plug this in that USB port, please? Thanks. I have this one now. That's it. This, basically, again, this was... This is the existing policy with some highlights in it. This was passed on August 2nd of this year. The discussions had started much earlier. And the actual policy is in Exhibit A. And in the first paragraph, it was very specific that it would disallow use of pool cars for elected officials, with the exception of the Sheriff's Department and the Assessor for Assessment, were excluded from that. It would primarily, well, include all other elected officials. And then it went on with the limitations, and these limitations came from the actual budget hearings back in May from the Budget Committee, which spent quite a bit of time on travel expenses. And also in here, it said that, right at the bottom, exceeding, you know, travel training expense exceeding 1,500, not pre-approved, will be the personal responsibility of the commissioner or elected official. In the, and that's, again, the crux of the policy had to do with elected officials' expenses, travel expenses. And what occurred, and which I addressed at the last meeting as basically a heads-up of the last general meeting, was I proposed to put this on this agenda, to give basically notice. I further went on to explain in the two-page memorandum that I had put in on this full packet that we have for discussion here today, that the purpose was to discuss a couple of recommendations at this time and then direct County Council to bring that back as an amendment or in an amendment to this existing policy and exhibit which currently exists and has existed since August 2nd of this year. We have in that, I had included, and this again is in the packet, not on the policy, in looking at what, well, let me go back to the email. And I will certainly, I don't have it with me, but I will get that to Interim Director Hit on the email from Catherine Wiley, who basically, I'll paraphrase, but she had been actively involved in expenses and the budget and overspending on various categories, and then coming back...
Excuse me, could you clarify that, please? Who is overspending or perhaps abusing?
I'm saying, I'm being general to try and paraphrase. Her email said she had been very engaged in finances and expenses, budgeted expenses of Commissioners, not just Commissioners. She has put on presentations previously before the Board.
Could you give us a general timeframe of that, perhaps?
I will, I can get back to you, Commissioner, through Interim Director Huddle, and I can give you the day of the presentation to the Board. It was a rather lengthy presentation to the Board of Directors.
Okay, but I'm interpreting what you're saying as she's kind of a watchdog in an honorable sense, that she's watching over the county dollars.
Yes, I would say that's a fair, thank you, summary, okay. And that her comment was basically that it appeared or that the vehicle that you drive specifically had been seen by individuals in Brookings. Her question was, you know, if it falls within county, it's not authorized for use, basically by elected official, per the policy. And it's right, it's right there. So her final comment was that, and I agreed with the comment, if we have, and this Board and the citizens have policy regarding anything, if we make policy and it's not followed and we ignore it, what's the point of having any policies on it? And certainly on the expenses, if we have a very specific expense policy, in this case primarily for elected officials, we approve it, we don't follow it, what's the point? And I agree with her, looking at it that way. Commissioner Boyce, again?
Thank you, so if we have another...
And after this, as I say...
I won't interrupt you anymore, thank you.
I'll try and finish my thought here. Commissioner Boyce?
So if we have another fire emergency in Curry County, you want me to ride a horse?
I won't respond to it.
Well, I mean, what would you like me to do?
I won't respond.
That's a very important question, because we're probably going to have another forced fire. Sad to say. Hopefully, it won't be a mega one again.
Okay, so do you have any other before?
Not at this time, thank you.
Continue, okay, I want to continue then, and I'll finish, okay. What I did was I went into the expenses to date for the Commissioner's office, because it's primarily on this particular issue revolved around the Commissioner's office. The expenses, the vehicle expenses for the first two months were addressed on page 2 of the memo. The mileage charges were $582 and $634 respectively. $582 for July, which the policy did not exist at that point. $634 was for August. And there was no exclusion or reduction for mileage that was not used for out-of-county travel. So there was no differentiation. It was submitted as all, if it was per policy, all out of the county, which it was not. We just recently received the mileage for the month of September for, again, these just are the... these just are the two vehicles that are assigned to the Commissioners. The mileage for the one vehicle, the Taurus, for the month of September is twelve hundred and thirty dollars. So at this point, after basically one quarter, we've exceeded those expenses for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. And on the other credit card expenses, we do not have current information on that. And I'll look at, you know, Interim Director Hitt on that. In part because of the closeout of the fiscal year, slows down the creation or the updating of the revenue and expense reports for the subsequent months in the new fiscal year. We do have the costs for the last quarter, the last two months for the Commissioners, you know, if we wanna use as a, as a, an average. And those were averaging about five to six hundred dollars per month for the last couple of months. It's no guarantee that that's what the future- that the future will have, but it's an indicator. So at that point, we pretty much have have used, we're, we're over budget right now. If we were to look at the items that were addressed in the in the line items in the budget for the, for the Commissioner's Office, including the vehicles. So what I'm proposing to request that the County Council come back with is in the packet I had added a couple of forms that are used now by others. One is a vehicle form that comes from the Road Department. We had an example of the Clerk's Office used one of the other vehicles that's typically assigned to the, to the Commissioner's Office. And it shows how the, the mechanics work from the Road Department as far as the person that identified it, the person that used it. It's one, a little one-page for a half-page form. They check, they check it out, they sign it back in, it goes to the Road Department. They receive those forms all the time. It tracks for their costing, which they have to do. And they have very, very good costing on operation and maintenance of all the vehicles here at the county. And to do that, again, to, you know, and bring back based on the, on that recommendation, modifications and also to proceed with the consequences of what the policy says. And the policy says, number one, if it's, if it's not out of county, it's not approved. It's the responsibility of the individual that uses it. And to have accountability for the policy that we have in effect. And that's my, my general discussion. For any, any questions at this point. I think, Commissioner Boyce, you, you have the questions first today.
Thank you. So are you proposing a penalty, perhaps? Or could go as far as a recall on this. It's really blatant abuse of, it's a fifteen-year-old car. Yeah, I basically ran, I'm sorry?
I say I wait for you to finish before I answer your question.
Okay. So, yeah, fifteen-year-old car, we just appropriated fifty, excuse me, thirty-one thousand for a new four-wheel drive for our planning inspector, our building inspector, which I supported, by the way, despite that four-wheel drive was absolutely unnecessary in the sights that he has to go to. I remained silent on that because it just wasn't worth arguing over. Most of this time, and if Council Huddle was here, he could verify that it'll take a while, but it could be reimbursed through FEMA, is a very clear administrative duty that I, we had. And I, uh, yeah, I, I, I think I went down there twenty-three straight days, maybe less than one day. I can't remember for sure to make the morning briefings and learn absolutely everything I could, visit with the people that lost their homes. I mean, I could go, I could spend a lot of time validating the time I put into this fire and the absolute utter heartbreak that I've witnessed the last thirty days. And so to beg for a car, yeah, it kinda rubs me the wrong way. And I'll be glad to pay it back if that's really your policy. Or maybe your team of lawyers can, I don't know, sue me or something. It's, it's, it's really disheartening. I've controlled my emotions on this and fire, this fire for almost three months now. And it's, it's a huge hit to this county. And I can't even give a fire policy update or fire, excuse me, update at the beginning of a meeting. Shocking. And so, yeah. I'm man enough to walk to Brookings if that's what I have to do. Work's just starting. And I will. That's all I have, Mr. Huxley.
Commissioner Gold, do you have any comments?
Well, I do know a lot of those meetings were available by phone 'cause I listened in on a, a number of them. I do know that both Commissioner Huxley and myself do live in Brookings and we would be willing to, I'm sure, attend some of those. So I think we need to follow, follow by example as far as the travel policy goes.
So where were you both?
Where was I?
Yeah.
I've been-
You were participating on the phone?
Yes, I have, yes.
All right, that's your, I believe, ma'am, that's your approach to county government. And I can give you tremendous data from wise people that disagree that the phone is the way to conduct business, in particular with what we just dealt with and are dealing with presently and in the future. So I just, we just have some very, very strong disagreements there.
Well, I do know the county is in financial difficulties and-
And I just told you, I think it can be reimbursed. And so this is where you wanna make your cuts after you do a, a brand-new thirty-one-thousand-dollar vehicle, and I spent a thousand dollars in two months. I am shocked and forgive me.
It's okay to go back and forth, but let's let one finish their thought before we interrupt, you know, what they're saying.
I represent the people of this county. I represent the people of the pack of lunchbox at South Coast Lumber, the single moms that work at Fred Meyer, the veterans who are ignored. And with what we're faced with, it is, I don't know how I can do it any cheaper, and I'm glad to do it. That's what I signed up for and that's what I'm responsible for. I'm not gonna, so, I'm not going to represent strictly some Harborfront special interest groups or donors or any political party, including the Tea Party. I'm gonna represent the little guy in this county who just got hosed with this fire. And so to beg for a car, I'm not even, excuse me, as far as Agenda Item, I'm not even gonna ask for a car. I don't wanna lower myself. A fifteen-year-old car that has eighty thousand miles on it. And I'm happy with that, thankful to have it. That's all.
Do you have any more comments, Commissioner?
I could just mention that I use my own car coming back and forth all the time. I've never asked for a dime, so, and go into meetings, so.
Well, I have a twenty-year-old truck my grandkids were raised in. It's got a lot of sentimental value. It's got two-hundred-and-fifty thousand mile on it, the biggest Ford truck pickup the Ford ever made. And then I have a twenty-year-old Mercedes that has equal sentimental value. I'm not gonna use those. And I'm not gonna buy a new car. Anybody that knows me knows I don't buy new vehicles. I don't like interest payments, so, simple as that. So we'll just let ten cars sit over there in the parking lot and let the wheels rot off of them. Commissioner Boyce, you're not gonna use a car. Goodness sakes.
Are you through?
Feel much better?
Okay. So, again, I'm just asking that we give to County Council, who's not here, we can give through, through Interim Director Hitt, direction to proceed as requested in the, in the memo and this discussion.
Well, you know, if we set a policy, we need to lead by example. And so I'm all with it.
I have one more thing.
Okay, so we-
I would've expected gratitude in the middle of an emergency to support the people at that end of the county. And from the very beginning, the very first minute the sheriff called me, said you're needed down here. And so to have any kind of mutual respect or just a simple, hey, way to go. Not to mention I try and be responsible in reporting to you and updating you. And we're hung up on a thousand dollars. Yeah, a simple thank you would've been really appreciated, folks.
Okay, so do we have a second to the motion?
Do we get to speak on this after you've disowned?
No, Ted, nobody had commented. But, but yours was on another, another item. Then, then that's my mistake. Then let's, let me see. Oh, my, my mistake. My mistake, sorry. Okay. Yes, let's, let's take public comments on this. And we just had an additional one, we will let it go. But our policy again, and we've had it long enough, is we get these in at the first of the meeting, okay?
But I'll always rebel on that. If anybody wants to talk, it's encouraged.
Please, please, okay. You wanna identify yourself, Ted?
My name's Ted Fitzgerald, I'm a resident of Carpentville, which is in Curry County. I, this is an ill-considered policy you've been given. You, you made this decision based on bad information. And, and it appears to be a punitive attack on a Commissioner who's doing the job of a Commissioner. I, I grew up in this county and my father was a Commissioner. My brother-in-law was a County Commissioner. My, I have been privileged to work with many great people. Probably one of the greatest guys you'll ever meet is TV Skinner, who was a longtime Commissioner here in this county. Honorable person, exemplary individual. I learned how to be a Commissioner. And you know what it is mostly? It's mostly a lot of work, a lot of driving. Because what the Commissioner's role is, is to represent this county on, on issues. That's part, one of the major roles that we have throughout the state. I, I, I was even thinking as I got up this morning, I grew up on this ranch out there by Carpentville. You'd come out and visit, same place it's ever been. The guy that homesteaded that place was named Raleigh Scott. He was a homes, he was a County Commissioner here for twelve years. And then he served in the Legislature. He had to travel from here in eighteen eighty, around eighteen eighty, to Salem for the Legislative Session. That's what Commissioners do. They don't appear by phone. If we go back, Sue, to our experience with the sinkhole, you were a Commissioner at the port. You were a part of that. I will tell you, we got the FEMA money not because of any of your efforts, not because of any of my efforts. We got it because of the efforts of David Brock Smith, who was a Commissioner who drove down there, got on-site, got in the face of ODOT and turned things around. That is what is required of a Commissioner, hands-on action in many cases. And to say that you can appear by phone is a disservice. And I would, I would ask that you reconsider that as you're approached to governance in this county because this, there's a long history. Go, I'll, go, go look it up and see how people have acted and how our best Commissioners have served this county. And it is not through listening to the advice of people who make recommendations to limit their political opponents when they themselves, like Catherine Wiley, has received large, thousands of dollars in county reimbursement for travel to Washington DC and other places. Based on my information that I got from someone through a Freedom of Information Act request, I don't know that that was ever disclosed. I'm wondering why this policy is targeted only at the executives that are the most, they're, they're the tip of the spear here in this county in a lot of cases. And I think it does a real disservice to even consider a fifteen-hundred-dollar annual per person. Malheur County, tiny place, no, no people in it. Ten thousand dollars a year total for the three Commissioners. I'll admit, it's a long drive to Salem, but they make it work. That's, that's certainly more of an effort and they're not in good shape either. So I would, I would ask that you look at that and when you go for recommendations to alter this, you use, you take a thoughtful approach and figure out what exactly needs to be done. And bear in mind that there are cases where we need the Commissioners to travel within this county in a time-sensitive manner. And it is not beyond the pale to provide them with a car for this incredible sacrifice that all of you have to make as Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. One question, Ted. You, you made, just what, if you would, if you would comment again. You mentioned that, something about Freedom of Information Act for Catherine Wiley's expenses?
Yeah, through the county. The year is two thousand, uh, seven through two thousand and twelve, something like that. I've got it here, but-
Through, through Curry County?
Through Curry County, yeah. She's received quite a, quite, quite a bit from various committees that she was on. And, yeah, that's, I, I could bring up slides, but I gotta tell you-
No, that's okay, I, I just wanted to get clear in my mind, so-
I sort of expected you guys to be aware of that, which you're gonna look at the policy.
Well, if, if it's accurate, but two thousand's-
Oh, oh, it is. I can provide, I'll provide you with the information after the meeting.
Okay, if you would, okay, thanks, Ted.
Or I can get you my copy right now.
You can bring it up now.
After the meeting, after the meeting's fine.
I'll just hand it to you right now and then we can, you guys can make, here's a spreadsheet of the cost that she's received and here's the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, thank you. And we'll just give this, let me count the pages here. John, to John Jesuit. I don't know, there's about ten or more pages. Can we just pass it to John? And then we can enter that as a- Okay, okay. Okay, and then the other, let me see, that was to was Connie Hunter.
Connie Hunter, Curry County. The policy document that comes to mind right now is the Constitution. Our founding fathers had the forethought to know that we had to amend it. They knew that it would be what, a living document? All policy at all levels of government are living documents. And they're meant to be changed, they're meant to be improved. They aren't just something that's put down on paper. It's a concept that's put down on paper, but there are lots of degrees to which a policy can be enforced. You just waived a policy and allowed me to come up right now. So thank you for that. Let's be clear that in an emergency, a policy that doesn't include an emergency clause for employees, for Commissioners, or for necessary business beyond the things that we consider every day, as was so eloquently explained by Ted Fitzgerald, I think that we have to really look at the quality of the policy. I don't think the policy has enough quality in there, enough important pieces to make it a viable policy. Fix the policy by adding emergency clauses. Are you kidding me? We had a natural disaster and we're bickering over the fact that we had somebody that gave a care enough to get out on a Saturday or a Sunday or whatever day of the week. Sorry that you had to be put through this Commissioner Court. I think it's, it's disgusting to me, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Thanks, Becky.
Dave? Okay, this is your, your comment then? Okay.
Yeah, I'm David Barnes, I live in the county. Commissioner Gold, I, I know you said you participated, you listened in on these meetings that you could call in on. Did you speak to anybody at them or did you just listen in on the meetings? Did you have any input?
On some of them I listened, some of them I spoke, yes.
Okay, you know, I just, I wanna remind you, you, you've, you've told us often how you worked as a teacher. The technology exists to have one centralized teacher and have it put on, on television screens into classrooms and get rid of all the teachers. You could have one third-grade teacher, one fourth grade, one fifth grade for the entire country and have it put up on, on screen. Do you think that's a good way to teach? I mean, the technology exists for it, that, you know, you could all be, every teacher could be replaced by one.
I would just say that would be, depend on the, the subject and so forth.
I, I, okay, I just, you know, if you think that's a good idea, then I-
I know there are computer classes now available, online, online classes that people take all the time.
Okay, I-
And I'm not saying all classes are good online, but there are many, many online classes.
Not all governance can be done over the phone either, ma'am. I just wanna remind you of that.
Thank you. Okay. So we had a motion and we had some public comments. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion was to- Okay, the motion was to direct, in this case, interim director, Hitt, to proceed and interface with county council in regards to the modification or amending of this existing policy.
What, just may I ask clarification?
Yes.
So, you're, my understanding from your original comments, Mr. Chairman, is that you're looking for amendments to the forms, not to the policy?
Well, to the policy also, uh, as he would deem fit from, from a legal standpoint.
To better enforce it?
Well, to better, but to include, because he would have to reference back, I'm assuming, that's how he chose or chooses to write it, not how I would choose, uh, to write it, to include those forms and the discussion that we've had here, and also the, the two points in the memo.
Okay.
But that would be for him to, to do.
When you talked, didn't you say, because you talked about the over...
Ted, come on, come on, we'll, we'll allow it.
Just because part of the clarification, I understood when you spoke was that there were, you were talking about the overruns early on, and the fact that, that you've exceeded it within the first two months of the fiscal year?
Correct.
Is that going to be included in, in the review as well?
Oh, it's just in his review, but not necessarily policy-wise. That was just information so that we say, okay, here we have a policy. It clearly doesn't work, because there's no tracking. So, what do we need to do to, to add requirements there? So, we, we have a policy that's, that's workable. If we have a policy that says we can spend in the county, you know, we, let's say a million dollars, and we spend 2 million, well, we can't just after the fact. And that's what, but there are, there are requirements, state requirements, state law, you know, that is in effect to where you can do this, or if you reach this thing, you have to do this. And that's what we need, I think. Also, it's a matter of scale, and it's relative, but yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, yes. Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Commissioner Gold?
I think, in lieu of an emergency, maybe there should be something in the travel policy regarding that so that we could have some exception.
Again, we can, but, but, but you do that, um, you, you don't do that after the, the fact. You have something, so you do it before versus come back and say, after the fact.
Of course, we don't always know when an emergency's going to show up, so...
But, again, okay. So, that can be passed on to county council also.
So, just getting point of clarification, so the, the amendment, the motion, you're amending your motion to include possible, um, language changes that would provide for some exceptions?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we call for the question?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Okay, we have that down now. Excuse me, John Jesuit, would you just do me a favor and pull that out, please? The, that USB port. Thank you. Okay, the next item is agenda item 9B, and this is additional audio/video equipment. And I had, again, touched on this in previous meetings, that it was going to bring something back. We had, um, let me get to the page number here.
I think it's 118, I think?
Yeah, I've got it, I just get to it versus just to paraphrase. That, um, we had, and this, the, the budget documents have been reviewed here also, is we knew when we first put the audio/video in play, the first of the, first of 2017, that we had, uh, these dedicated funds from Charter of Communication that are dedicated for that type of equipment. We put the audio/video equipment in and, and have used it for the last nine, nine months. We're into month number 10 now. There were some additions as we went through the, the first nine months or the first three quarters of the calendar year. And primarily, the, we, we moved up, we, we had done both this room, we had done a much lesser degree. We had done the blue room downstairs on the, on the first floor. In order to meet, with, to learn as we go and react, we ended up moving up all the microphones and mixers that support those microphones upstairs here to this room to support larger groups of individuals speaking. Primarily, the, the budget committee meetings, in which we had, you know, seven microphones, just for the budget committee and the accountant, okay? Um, we have since then looked at moving up or moving back down the, the wireless stick microphones, the mixing equipment or the mixers required for those, to move those back downstairs and to, uh, provide wireless lapel mics, which we found best during the meetings that we had during the, the budget hearings or the budget meetings here versus the, the, the stick-held wireless mics. It just was not the preference. They would get moved around, and it was very difficult to pick up some of the, the comments from the people depending upon where the microphones were. That was the large portion of this, uh, budget and proposal. There was an additional, and, and which is part of this, in the proposal, there was an additional $2,000 for primarily software to be used in conjunction with showing or providing the, the streaming video of the meetings on the new county website. That's a one-time purchase for that, for that software to interface with, revise the soft, the company that's, that's doing the website for us, and to put them out on the, on the internet. There was one other item that was approximately $600 to add 110 volt on one of the columns down in the blue room, which in hindsight, we should have done it at first. But what we have to do is string out extension cords every time we have the laptop computer down there to use on the screens down there. But to have that right at the column as we do the internet connection, it's at the column. So, that's basically the, the request on this, is to approve, um, this for, and it's approximately total, it would be, um, seven, I'm going to round it, $7,100 for Brant Media and another 750 for the, the, uh, the wiring and to purchase two other wireless mic, uh, mice, because the ones that we did purchase originally for this just are not working well. So, that's, uh, that's the request at this point in time.
So, I'm seeing...
To go ahead and, and propose to order, you know, have, have county council, basically create a, a contract with Brant Media or an agreement with them to, to provide the materials and the services to, to do the installation. And this would also include two speakers out in the hallway here adjacent to this room for overflow, so that we can toggle those on and off, so that people standing outside can hear if they choose not to go downstairs to the blue room. Commissioner, Mr. Gold?
Okay, so I'm looking at this, and it looks like it's about, um, $5,400 in equipment, and then the rest is for Brant Media, the installation?
Correct.
Okay, and so the equipment comes out of not our budget, but...
All this comes out of PEG, our PEG funds, which we have... The entire, this entire amount is PEG funding. This is not general funding. This is all, that dedicated, uh, PEG funding, we did not use what we were budgeted last year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And, and plus, we received more than we had budgeted to receive last year. So, we have a, I'm not saying a surplus, but that's where the, the funds would come from.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
So, I'm asking for approval from the board to, again, direct county council to, uh, work with Brant Media in an agreement for them to provide the materials and services to do that.
I so move.
Question?
Commissioner Voice?
You're confirming that it's all coming out of PEG funds?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the total roughly again?
Well, would be rounded off eight, under about 79, call it 8,000. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Call it 8,000, correct, okay.
I'm looking at the grand total here, and it says $7,092.
Okay, and, and on, but on the, on the, uh, the agenda routing slip, I went further discussion, because it wasn't through the Brant proposal that we would have an additional cost of $750. Also, I confirmed it would be through PEG funds for the 600.
Oh, okay.
For the electrical, and then 150 for the two wireless, uh, mice.
So, we're talking close to 8,000?
Close to 8,000 total.
Okay.
And all of those would be via the PEG funds.
Okay.
Any other questions or? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item 9C is it All Care Grant Discussion Next Steps, and interim director Hitt, it was for clearly county council Huddle. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Are we going to have this, uh, discussion without Council Huddle here? What's, what's our approach?
Well, that's ultimately the commissioner's choice. I'm fine with going ahead and representing Counselor Huddle, because I don't think either one of these two that he's down for are overly complex or have a lot of legal nuances to them. However, if the board would prefer postponing them to a future meeting, I'm fine with that as well.
There was, did you, were you finished with your...
I see no need to do it today. I would, I would delay or continue till our next, very 18th meeting.
But for, for the following reasons, is that there was additional, this was a document that was proposed that was a month or, or more old.
Right.
And I had several email correspondences with county Huddle back and forth. So, I was rather confused why that initial letter was still there. That's the same question we had six, almost six weeks ago. And he had laid back and forth in communication. And I can certainly provide you with the, with the emails that, that wasn't going to, that wasn't the, uh, what, what, what All Care was proposing in that one short letter was not what the commissioners were really acceptable to, period.
And I think that's...
And we, we ended up with the same, the same letter, so I'm not sure why. John?
Just to, uh, follow up there from Commissioner Huddle's memo on the AGRS. He says, uh, All Care sent a letter to the commissioners confirming that the grant funds can be used for non-housing study purposes. The letter, um, the letter also proposed terms of grant administration. So, the question is, staff seeks feedback whether All Care's terms are acceptable or further discussion is needed.
And I have much more communication with county council on that, and he in turn was going back and forth with the Sam Engel.
Okay, well, in line of that, Mr. Chair, then I would probably agree with Commissioner Voice. We should probably postpone it then.
And I'll get, get you copies of, of that, okay. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Gold? So, we have concurrence amongst this all? Okay. Okay, the agenda item 9D, it was at Brookings Head Start, Community Development Grant, the summary document, again, it was John Huddle. And then I'm shown here also, just before we opened this, I had, had a discussion Friday with county council Huddle and interim director Hitt. Not on this subject, but the subject at the end came in to it, is that when the original document from county council had been forwarded back and forth, and it was provided to us at the last, during the meeting, during the last regular meeting we had, which would be two weeks ago. Council Huddle asked for comments back on that. I had responded back to him on Sunday, the 24th, so not this past Sunday, the prior Sunday, and said basically, it, his document to me was confusing. As we were provided a photocopy, it was easier to create a Word document, which I did. I provided him with two Word documents, uh, which I thought were much simpler when it came up. And that was after review of video, you know, the meeting and my notes. I provided it in Word document format, so it could be easily, you know, modified. In the conversation, I hadn't heard back, and in the conversation Friday, he basically, just this past Friday, said he hadn't really looked at it. And then the two of you said, shall we just basically provide those two documents in the packet? And I said, well, yeah, we need to, to do something, especially if we haven't looked at them. So, I would be inclined to, to say the same thing, unless you have other, you know, to, to delay it. Unless you have, there were omission, you know, there's things that weren't there, and I think things that were confusing.
Well, we do have from, um, Mr. Huddle, it was on your desk, revised what he calls Brookings Head Start options identified as of September 13th. So, actually, these are revisions. After that, they're in the yellow highlight, that I think were his attempts, Mr. Chairman, to incorporate, uh, things that perhaps weren't in his summary, um, that were on your summary. So, the real purpose here is just to be settled on a document that best encompasses the discussion at the workshop we had with the state IFA authority, with the ORC chairperson, um, the, the grant administrator. So, I know he told me that this statement with the, the yellow highlight that he just completed either yesterday or perhaps the day before, has the concurrence of these other organizations, that his statements correctly represent what they committed and what they stated at our workshop a couple, three weeks ago. So, I guess the question is, are you prepared to find either Mr. Huddle's statement satisfactory? And then, then I would have a question for you as to the follow-up, if you do. Or if you don't, do you find Chairman Huxley's summary of the discussion at the workshop more appropriate and acceptable? And if neither is acceptable, then we, yes, I would agree. We would need to bring it back at a future meeting then.
If, if I may again, just to include some conversations that we had during our, during our telephone call last Friday, um, these that he has added were things that have been overlooked, that I had included here.
Correct.
What I told him originally too, was that I included everything that was here, except simplified some of the duplication, and there are duplicated, many duplicated paragraphs. He'd included some of the items that had been overlooked, that I had here. I still don't see, because it was a big question, uh, the CCD, which we talked about with my question marks and what my question marks meant, um, as far as further compensation at this stage, where there was still a, a, a big question, what the way that he had that worded. It, it left it open that, um, the county was, was to be okay, or we could, we could turn back with, with no financial consequences, all that had been invoiced to date. But then it went on, and I, let me see if I have my marked up of his. Then on paragraph three, and that's not been changed, um, on the left side, option to stop now, the second sentence said the county, this is in addition, the county would pay all outstanding invoices to date from CCD, or CCD. That implied that they could have many different invoices that we're not even aware of, or, and, and that's why I questioned that.
It's a fair question, yeah, fair question.
And it still hasn't been addressed, and that's why I just put CCD, question mark, question mark, question mark. Any further compensation at this stage, so that still needs to be clarified.
Uh, I would agree, it could stand to be clarified, for sure. I, I believe the intent was, but again, we don't have it in writing at this point. The intent was that whatever CCD had in the way of outstanding billi- billings would be covered by the grant. And I believe the IFA state reps were, they were on board with that, but you're correct, we don't have that-
You know, we've, we've said one thing, we've said that all invoices, you know, to date-
Yeah, that's true.
But this is saying, if something's still outstanding, we'll cover that too, but we don't know what. And that's why I had question marks.
In light-
I don't think, I don't think that was agreed to.
In light of that, then it would be my recommendation then to, um, I'll have another conversation with Mr. Huddle regarding your concerns, and again, I think they're totally legitimate, um, and we will bring this back-
Okay.
At your next meeting.
And that will give us time to discuss, well, any Commissioner with, with you, or, or, you know, on these two options.
Would that likely, excuse me?
Uh, Commissioner Boyce?
Likely be our eighteenth general meeting?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
It certainly should be the eighteenth.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay, are we in a concurrence there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, on Agenda Item Nine E is an update on the Charter, Channel One Eighty-One, and again, that was, uh, Council Huddle for ten minutes.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, Councilor Huddle and I had not had a chance to discuss this, and I wasn't, uh, very focused in on it, because I knew he was very focused in on it. So, I'll have to punt here to the illustrious, uh, Mr. King here, and-
Illustrious.
Yes, and hopefully, he can, uh, enlighten us all.
Okay, so, you wanna identify yourself, Carl?
Carl King, the Seagull Beach, uh, Mr. Huddle and I met yesterday and had a discussion as to where we are on this. In your packet was the, when we discussed this at the workshop, the direction we received from the Board was that you did not, you, to distance yourself as far as you could for public access, that the equipment to be purchased would be transferred in ownership over to the nonprofit, and that the nonprofit Curry County Voices, which is the Gold Beach Rotary Foundation, would not have access to the Blue Room for any purpose. The redraft that is in your packet reflects those changes, uh, in the body of it. Lengthy paragraph dealing with the restrictions on access to your facilities has been removed, and the change has been made on the ownership of the equipment, with the understanding that if Curry County Voices ceased to use it for PEG purposes, ownership would revert back to you. And the equipment list on Attachment B was shortened, uh, to reflect the fact that when it was first prepared, I was not aware that you had a need that you just addressed for additional equipment out of those restricted funds, and I didn't know where you were, and I certainly didn't view the sense of our discussions as one where you were going to exhaust those restricted funds. To bring you up to date as to what's happened since the workshop, we have continued to reach out to the community, we have tentative arrangements for the required facilities in all three cities. We have had expressions of interest in the schools to have students involved in program production. We've had expressions of interest from major healthcare providers and businesses and others in the community, nonprofits, to be able to use this channel to promote and to educate the public as to what services they have available. And at some point this morning, I received an email indicating that the final piece of granting I needed to have the funds to undertake the initial phases of this had been approved, and so, from three different rotary entities, we have a total of five thousand dollars right now, and the likely addition of the other twenty-five hundred we might need in the spring, again, if we need it. So, we're moving forward. Now, I had company over the weekend, and I was gonna show them how this was working, and I showed them Channel One Eighty-Two on my Charter cable, and I, we watched one of your meetings or workshops from June. And I flipped over to One Eighty-One to show them that what had been there forever was this digital clock that was constantly winding down. Lo and behold, I saw programming from Del Norte County. And who knows why? There have been some discussions that Mr. Huddle and Brant Media have had with Charter as to difficulties they're having with your programming on One Eighty-Two. And I think Mr. Huddle and I agree that there is a technical issue here that needs to be resolved, and so it's, we're not asking you to approve this at this time. But, you know, we hope that we will be able to resolve with Charter those technical difficulties, and that our funding will be still in place, and we will continue to work with the community to move this forward, but as of now, we're simply asking you to table this, or to just hold it in abeyance, and hopefully, at your next meeting, or two meetings from now, we'll be able to come back to you with a, a signal that we worked out that difficulty with Charter, and we can move forward, you know, answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Boyce first, Commissioner Gold, and then?
I think what you're doing is a worthy project and would be a real feather in the cap for the, the schools.
Well, I, I think, you know, the schools are being very receptive to it now, and, and, you know, we were starting to, we have people recruiting students to be trained to operate the equipment when this wrinkle popped up with our, our friends at Charter. And we're just gonna hold that in abeyance, we're not gonna totally set it aside, we're gonna continue moving forward, but, uh, and, and we are starting to design our website so that we can stream on a website, as you do with your channel, and make it available to people even who do not have Charter.
Director Hitt?
Just a question, Carl, and maybe this falls into the category of a technical, one of the technical questions. I thought I read something from John Huddle that we may not qualify for the additional channel, because we don't have enough programming on, on this channel?
The, the Charter Franchise Agreement requires a certain level of programming on One Eighty-Two before the county has the right to require them to give us One Eighty-One. I believe Brant Media has not looked to see if we comply with that now, and we may, we may not, but it's for a twelve-week period, and you have to give them sixty days' notice. So, the, the goal is, when we move forward, is Brant Media will make sure you do comply. It can be public interest programming, you know, and, and if you watch One Eighty-Two right now, you see legislative hearings from Salem, you see travel logs, you see, uh, other programs other than just your meetings and workshops, as exciting as your meetings and workshops may be, occasionally, people get to watch something else on One Eighty-Two. But we, we, I think we can comply with that and move forward. There's an issue with analog versus digital and lines. And it's, uh, and John and I just started talking about that yesterday, and I, I went home and read the full Charter Franchise Agreement, sent him an email with some suggestions, and we haven't had that follow-up conversation yet.
Okay, I'll, I'll add what, what I'm aware of here. But to your comment, you know, you referenced exhausting the PEG funds, and then I might ask, uh, even, you know, well, we'll see, um, we haven't exhausted the PEG funds, you and I had a discussion about that.
Yeah, well, I understand that now.
And I was very specific, okay, okay, so, uh, we would not- It was never the plan, this never occurred, okay? Matter of fact, we have more PEG, PEG funds than we anticipated, than we budgeted. On the, on the channel, yeah, and yes, the digital versus the analog is a, is a huge one for, for infrastructure, okay, huge, especially if Charter is claiming that that's the, that's the county's responsibility and not Charter's, but you mentioned that there are a lot of problem, or there have been problems on the current channel, One Eighty-Two. I don't believe, if there are any problems, they may be contractual or something, when the, you know, the, the five-year, I believe it's a five-year contract or agreement with Charter, it has about a year and a half, year and a half to go. And in, from the start on this discussion, a month, months ago now, it was my understanding from what was being, uh, presented, was that, uh, the county indeed had the second channel on it. Was no question, that in addition to the normal channel, which is One Eighty-Two, they also had One Eighty-One. And further, and I've just seen little bits and pieces of some of the correspondence back and forth, that the county does not indeed have Channel One Eighty-One. And you alluded to some of those, you know, as far as the programming and the contractual requirements, and I don't know whether there are other requirements too, but that was a huge change to, you know, from, yes, that's, that's not a problem, to, whoops, you know, we, we don't really have unencumbered access to, to Channel One Eighty-One at this point, and plus, we, we have an agreement that doesn't expire, and that's the time to really negotiate things like this. That doesn't expire for about another year and a half, and then Charter coming out with some of these curveballs as far as what they're interpreting, you know, PEG funds are required to also pay for their infrastructure, you know, that, I've just heard little bits and pieces. I think the, the comments that I saw in regards to what came up on, on Channel One Eighty-One in California, it was, at least, uh, my, my understanding from, from Brant Media was, and, and I think correspondence from, may have been from Charles, also, Charles Douglas, who's very knowledgeable on that, on the, the PEG operation, that, uh, it, it would be sheer coincidence that, that, that channel, you know, would come up, and it probably was not the same, you know, as far as however Charter controls all that, but he's, it's pretty much you can count on it, wasn't the Channel One Eighty-One that the county may in the future have access to, it's just coincidental that it came up in Del Norte County over the weekend.
Brookings had that issue a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so.
Council Huddle had access, has access to a letter where Brookings was communicating with Charter that all of a sudden, on their channel, Del Nor- North programming was there. Section five point three of your franchise agreement says the grantor shall provide one additional PEG channel for a maximum of two PEG channels upon sixty days' notice. And then it says, if the PEG channel provided pursuant to five point one is occupied, and then it gives seventy percent of the time between eleven o'clock and, and, and it's a typo, it says the grantor, but it shouldn't be say the grantee, uh, and so, you know, they have an obligation, it's mandatory that they provide you that channel if you are using the first channel adequately.
Condition, correct.
And there is a section in this agreement that says they can do it at their choice, whether it's digital or analog, and then there's a section that says they must give you PEG channels of the same quality that they use for their programming, and my understanding is, as of today, Charter has upgraded all of its channels to digital. So, I would maintain, I would personally maintain that they have an obligation to provide access digitally for us, and it's their obligation to do whatever needs to be done, but, uh, that's a discussion we're gonna be having with Charter.
Yeah, a big, a big one.
And, uh, we believe that will be resolved shortly, and, uh, we're still moving forward, but we slowed down a little bit.
Now, as far as the, you know, you said some of the equipment or the, some of the problems with One Eighty-Two, the, and this gets back to, to who is responsible for the Charter equipment off-site in the Charter facilities, and for some time, Brant Media has aired concerns that the module, what they call modulators, that take one signal and do whatever they do, you know, they have a, what I would refer to as an upstream and a downstream modulator in their building that's close to where the old Dairy Queen was here on, in Gold Beach. And the last time that we, Brant thought, when we lost a signal here, that it was the modulator that was clearly owned by Charter Communication, had finally failed, which was their concern. And it turned out that, that they had, somebody had inadvertently just flipped the switch off by mistake and basically shut, shut the, the signal down. But that's, to my knowledge, the only concern as far as the One Eighty-Two that's existing, and it's not on the county's end, it's on Charter's end.
And then it's causing, I, I believe that's, you know-
Correct.
The quality of your One Eighty-Two at times is marginal, and it's because of that issue with-
Absolutely, correct, but it's not, yeah, it's Charter, it's Charter equipment, not, not county, okay? Thank you. Does anybody else have any? Okay, so, we'll just, as you're suggesting then, we'll sort of hold in abeyance and, and come back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On, okay, to-
I wanna make a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Okay, on a general or, or on, on nine F or?
No, I'm just closing up there.
Okay.
We just spent twenty-five minutes on that, and, uh, literally, the county is burning, figuratively, the county is burning, and I just gotta say, if I hear modulator, or modem, or monologue, I'm just, I'm just really surprised. We've had the sheriff sitting back there for a half hour, well, excuse me, two hours, and, uh, I, I would've thought we could move him ahead on, on this, maybe he's intentionally interested in the subject we just, again, spent twenty-five minutes on, but I hope in the future, maybe we can streamline things just a little bit, and be aware of the, the folks that are here and should be recognized, that's all, thank you. Priorities. Priorities.
Commissioner Boyce, I didn't make the agenda, but that's what we have an interim director for, so I would
This has been standard, and you, sir, you know it's been standard, the eight months I've been working with you, trying to work with you. It's the norm.
And we now have a interim county administrator, Commissioner Boyce. Okay, so we're going
He's catching up quite well, by the way.
We're going to 9F, Commissioner Boyce. Did you want to pursue that or not?
Oh, I couldn't speak to it for just a second. I've started a lot of work with David Brock Smith, with regional county commissioners who have the same issues, problems, concerns, devastation that we have, maybe not to the degree, certainly the other regional state representatives, primarily in the Rogue Valley, but as far east as Klamath Falls, certainly as far north as Roseburg. And there's, there's quite a movement here. Of course, the Association of Oregon Counties, Association of O and C Counties, City of Brookings, I've met with Governor Brown two or three times, and I, Charles, if I may, on the American Lands Council, if we could pop that up, I think it might be, if he's within earshot Anyway, the work that David Brock Smith has done.
Is this something John Jesuit can hook up for the commissioner?
I think it's
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
The two white pages that we had.
We can just get that out, then.
While we're looking there, Oregon Department of Forestry, certainly Senators Wyden and Merkley, yes, that's it, thank you. There should be a second one. But we can, we can just speak to that for a moment. Whether you like David Brock Smith or not and his work, and I've followed him very closely for four or five years now, and he was accused of abusing the county travel policy, and I've done plenty of research. The only two times he's ever flown out of Oregon was to Utah, to the American Lands Council, there's the information right there. And the previous slide showed that about 80% of the western United States is owned by the federal government. And so, the work that David and others have done, very critical work, we can, we can hang our hat on, because there is a movement with a new administration, and in particular, Ryan Zinke, Secretary of the Interior, Sonny Perdue, Secretary of the U.S. Forest Service, well, the Department of Agriculture, where of course, go figure, we grow trees, that's why it's in that department, and others who are trying to help a lot of the rural areas, particularly the western United States, get back control of their land, or at least have a seat at the table. Right now, the Forest Service, they're at the table, they know they messed up on this fire, they know they messed up hugely. They're not openly going to admit that, because they'd have to admit negligence, therefore, they would have to take care of the folks, the six families, seven families that lost their home. Senators Wyden and Merkley, I'm seeing just a little bit of, certainly DeFazio, Congressman DeFazio, a little different approach with the wildfires that we've had. Curry County lost one-third of the total acreage that went up in smoke in Oregon, just, just slightly under one-third. So, I've already worked with the Bear Team, the CMAT team, I can give you, okay, I'll just make sure everybody understands, the Bear Team is a burn area emergency response team, CMAT is a commission on mitigation and assistance team, FEMA, of course, federal emergency management, that's a tough one to, tough nut to crack there, but we're already on our way. Curry County Public Lands Access, certainly the Oregon Emergency Management Team, we still have serious SOD, sudden oak death task force, the issues that we need to work with there, South Coast Lumber, of course, this is not a conclusive list. But I started working with these, some of these groups before the fire, and it's part of my obligation, part of my responsibility, certainly part of my vision for this county, back to American Lands Council, there is hope. And when I do Commissioner Comments at the end of this meeting, I'll have just a few paragraphs that I will read from some of the people I've heard from all over the western U.S. that are, again, facing similar issues. So, as it relates to an emergency travel vehicle, you know, maybe I'll ask the sheriff if he's got a car available. If I promise I won't use the sirens and the light, lights, except when I get to Thomas Creek Bridge, and, because I never hit it right there, never hit it right, so, on the red light. But there's going to be a lot of pressure on us to meet with these organizations. Administrator Hitt and Council Huddle are, you know, they're having the two, and John, you know, the, the Curriton Trio, I'm calling them, I'm very proud to say. You coming on board at this time with the fire, which we certainly, well, I wouldn't say we didn't anticipate it, we had fire meetings on July 7th, and this thing started on the 12th, but anyway, now that you're on board, I think you and, and we're clearing the desk for Council Huddle some, and there is, for lack of a better word, there's just pressure on us to really pursue, position ourselves, work with other counties, the governor's office is on board, I'm not making any promises, but the door is open, the window is slightly open, and it won't be open very long if we don't respond. So, if I'm on horseback, I might be a little delayed on some of the responsibilities. Couple more things, Mr. Chair. You outlined the $1,000 for the last two months for a 15-year-old car. I just want to ask you, if you don't see the slightest double standard in approving a new four-by-four vehicle, four-wheel-drive vehicle for the, the building, either one of you commissioners, would you care to speak to that? Because if you're going to say no on my request for a simple car, jalopy, doesn't matter, it's adequate, and it's, the need is, is about as valid as you could ask for, then certainly you must agree that it would at least appear to be a double standard or hypocritical on what our priorities are as public officials. I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. So, was that 9F also, or do you want to?
It was 9F, yes.
It was 9F, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm looking at what we have left, and I'm going to ask, you know, touch base with Director Hitt. We have, I'm going to go from the bottom up, Commissioner Comments, 15 minutes, estimated interim county administrator report, another 10, five, that's 20, announcements, five, and the one main item left is 9G. Before that, we will not get done before we have to take a lunch, so
So, let's just, excuse me.
Commissioner Boyce, I'm speaking, I'm addressing Administrator Hitt. So, do we want to go ahead with 9G at this point, and then take lunch after that?
That would be my recommendation to you.
Okay, then that's what we'll do. Okay, so, agenda item 9G is payroll distribution change for Sheriff John Ward, Commissioner Boyce.
Yeah, we've been here a couple of times before, he's one of the, simply put, he's one of the lowest-paid sheriffs in the state. Regardless of the check by, by fire, he has been before the board a couple of times on a very reasonable request, it costs the county nothing, and in terms of our budget, and then to watch him and his staff work for that, well, two months, but the 23 days that he was there every day, the leadership, the effort, the insight, the tough, tough, tough decisions that I don't know if I could have made. His capacity to work with the Brookings PD, his perception of when to call for national help, the National Guard, the Oregon State Police, I mean, I'm not, there's some things I disagree with the sheriff on, but this is the right thing to do, and I don't want to, I don't want any of the counties that I know to say, do you really pay your sheriff that low? I'm going to say, no, he got a raise. Through a backdoor, but he got a raise, thank you.
That's, those your, your comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Gold, do you have any?
I'm going to have to say, yes, he did get a raise, he got a 6% raise because he no longer has his PERS taken out. I'm also going to say that, once you sign up for PERS, as an employee, you're not entitled to have the amount that the county would have put towards PERS, I know of no other public entity that does that, so, and as to your comment about it costs the county nothing, yes, it does cost the county $1,148 a month. So, those are my comments.
Well, we'll just have to disagree on that, because it's coming out of his PERS retirement that he no longer is paying into, so it's not out of the county budget. I, I think we've been down that road several times, so I'm going to make a motion that we, whoop, excuse me, there is public comment, I'm sorry.
That's correct, that's correct. We had one, thank you, for, from Christopher Pash. You want to just come forward and identify yourself, please?
Good morning, Christopher Pash from Gold Beach. You know, watching, watching what happened in Las Vegas the other day was pretty terrifying. The most amazing thing to me was watching those police officers running into the bullets while everyone else was running away. I've stated publicly before that I think law enforcement, as well as fire rescue, should be the highest-paid employees in this nation, because they seem to be running into the fires and the bullets when we're all running in fear. Our sheriff is about $25,000 to $28,000 under the national average, much less a man with his tenure in this county, I would expect him to be, to be being, being paid above the national average. John, over the years, has become a friend of mine, I'd like to call him a friend of mine as well, but I met John doing some things in this county, search and rescue, and, and trying to head out, head off future problems. This man is available 24/7, he never backs down, and when this all came about in July, I watched John walk out of this room with his head down when he got a no, and I think a lot of us might have said, you know what, I've had enough, I've lived in this town my whole life, I've tried to give my heart and soul to this county, I've had enough, and just pack up their bags and walk away, but what did John do? He lowered his head and worked harder, and every time this county has needed this man, whether it be for just local issues, or with a fire, what he, what we just dealt with in Brookings area in this, in this county, this man lowers his head, never complains, never cries about it, he just does his job, over and above what most public officials that I've ever seen have ever done. For you to deny him this is, is absolute injustice. Your own county council recommended it. In my opinion, it does not cost this county one cent. I would imagine if you were to take a county poll right now, put something up on the website, ask everyone in this county if they would give this man what is due him or not, and I would say the results would probably be overwhelming, and how you can deny him what is rightfully his, I'm just, I'm almost ashamed of this board for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, since this is about me.
Sheriff Ward?
I didn't ask for this to be put back on, but I'm glad it was, because, you know, I appreciate Court Voice's, Commissioner Boyce's support on this. He was there during this fire almost every day that I was, and I was in it for over 24 days straight without a day off, 12, 14, 16 hours a day, to where I hit a wall and I got sick, and I had to put myself in bed and not work. Four days later, I was right back at it, trying to get everybody back in the, into their homes. So, I've asked for this before, I'm not going to be quiet about it anymore, because the reasons you've stated are not valid, not valid at all, and I'm going to be very vocal about it, and it's going to go public. I have had a conversation with the, the new county administrator. I felt that he gave me his support on this as well, he said it was, sounded very feasible for him to be able to do this, and I'm not asking for anything that's going to cost the county any money at all. The base salary for three different people, but above me, are getting way more money than I'm getting, the county council's getting way more, the roadmaster's getting paid more, the, the new county administrator's getting paid more. If you, if you take the hour, your hourly rate that you're paying Prothman, that's 5150, that's, that's $107,000 a year if that was to maintain that way. The, the community director, she's gets $1,800 less than I get, and she's got three employees, I have 44 employees. My, my, my salary is 75, 760 for the year, with a total benefit package to $94,000. This is 8,000 less than the community director gets. I'm in charge of 44 employees. I carry the most liability in the county, I'm responsible for the entire public safety of the county, I'm in charge of jail, patrol, civil, 911 dispatch, parole probation, emergency services, search and rescue, marine patrol, forest patrol. I am 24/7, 365. There is no other agency or person in this county that has 24/7, 365, and is open 24/7 hours a day, the sheriff's office is, and I'm responsible for that, and I'm very curiously liable for everything that every one of my employees do. Each year, the elected official compensation board has recommended a salary increase for the sheriff based on the comparables for other like-sized counties. Commissioners have discounted those recommendations. I get no vacation pay, I get no holiday pay, no sick pay, no comp time pay. I was appointed sheriff in 2004, October 2014. Did you fill the position of John Bishop when he retired because of health reasons? I took, I took over as the elected sheriff on January 1st, January 2nd of this year. The 2017, 2018 budget was approved with the reallocations of funds for the sheriff's compensation package to go into salary, but yet two commissioners out of the three refused to allocate them, even when the county council said it was legal, and there's no reason why it shouldn't be done. I have support of many constituents in, in the county, some who were here that I didn't even ask to be here today, to speak on my behalf. I didn't ask anything past that, but if I was to ask my constituents that this is what I'm doing, and I would ask for support, I could fill this room, I could fill the, the hallway, I could fill the streets, as a matter of fact, because I'm very popular, whether you believe it or not. Okay? The money that was allocated for my compensation package is not PERS money, it's money that is, goes into the compensation package, and they keep saying that the, you know, about this PERS, it has nothing to do with PERS. So, what I'm asking you to do is do the right thing. It's the right thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Sheriff, I don't know how popular you are, but I know you're trusted, and that's, takes years to gain. Congratulations on that.
I'm, I'm sorry, we
Well, of course, let him
I'm sorry, I got dragged outside the Colonel King, just arguing. Pardon me?
I got dragged outside to argue about the last issue, and I figured we had to get back when I could.
So
What do you think, Commissioner Gold? What do you think, Commissioner Gold? Why not?
That's fine.
Yeah, let's do it. Anybody else needs to talk.
Um, my name's Ted Fitzgerald. I just, I, again, I feel like a, kind of a historian here. I've lived here for, since I was six. I've known and worked with, not always in a voluntary capacity, with all the sheriffs in Curry County. I, uh, probably the most famous sheriff was, uh, Court's father, Alan Boyce. He, I saw my first dead person with your dad. There was a plane crash and he showed up on a Saturday night and, uh, or maybe it was a Friday night and we went out on the ranch and we discovered that. These guys work, they work hard. It's a complex, they're carrying the biggest load of anybody in this county, in my opinion. Um, I will, I will say that we've had some good ones and some bad ones. Our previous sheriff to, uh, to Sheriff Ward was, um, a good sheriff, very good sheriff and a very good friend of mine. But what you have now is a great sheriff. He's a really, he, he's an exceptional man and he, he gives his all to the county. And I think, I think that, uh, it would be in, to do anything else but, but to, to make him whole based on what he was receiving prior to his PERS retirement would be in, it's just not in the best interest of this county. And I, I don't wanna lose him, but I, I will tell you that when a public servant gets slapped in the face, lied to, stabbed in the back, worked around behind enough, eventually they will leave their post and I don't wanna see that happen with Sheriff Ward. Thank you.
Sheriff? Come on up and identify yourself, please.
George Rhodes, um, I'm from, uh, Brookings. And I apologize to the board for not getting here on time. I had an appointment that prevented me so I could, uh, address this issue. I'm gonna make it really short. If you're considering cost, you need to consider the cost of not doing this. Because that'll be much greater than any cost that's incurred by paying the sheriff what he deserves to be paid. Thank you.
Sorry, George, I'm sorry I didn't recognize you without my glasses. I'd,
No, no problem.
I had to put them on, won't you?
No problem, Mr. Gerald. Thank you.
Okay. We had a motion. Or do you wanna make?
No, I'm not making any motion. I have a comment.
Okay.
The county pays, is it 7.5% Social Security?
7.65.
7.65? Okay, so it would be above and beyond PERS. So, um, I'm thinking maybe we could do a compromise and do the PERS less the...
7.65 for Social Security.
7.65% for Social Security.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, may I save just a minute, comment?
Yep.
Just for clarification, uh, what Commissioner Gold has, uh, proposed as an amendment or as a, a motion is that, um, the money that, uh, would, would, if, if Sheriff Ward hadn't retired on PERS, that money that would have continued to go to PERS, um, I think it was $1,148 a month, the county doesn't have to pay or would not have had to pay Social Security tax on it. If, if that money is now allocated to a salary, then the county would have to pay Social Security of 7.65. So, that's what Commissioner Gold is trying to address, saving that, what would actually be an extra expense over and above what the current budget allocation is. And Sheriff Ward and I had that conversation briefly and, and, and so you, that's consistent with what you and I, conversation we had, correct, Sheriff? Okay, thank you.
And that's about $1,000. But that's kind of offsetted by the 6% extra you're getting by not paying PERS.
I'm not getting 6% extra.
No, if you think about it, that's money that's not coming out of your paycheck. Did your paycheck go up once you?
No.
You, you, you used to pay 6% out of your paycheck for PERS, right? That was your portion.
Correct.
Every employee, every county employee that's enrolled in PERS has to take 6% of their paycheck out. Okay, so once you got on PERS, then effect, you got a 6% pay raise because you weren't paying.
I thought you were talking about the money that I'm getting from my retirement now because...
Oh, no, I'm not talking about your retirement.
I...
No, I'm talking about, once you got off of PERS, once you started PERS, then you no longer have to pay 6% of your paycheck into PERS. So, in effect, you're getting a 6% raise, increase.
I wouldn't consider that an increase or a raise.
Well, I would if it were me. My take home would be greater by 6%.
But it was his money to begin with.
Well, I'm not...
It was a transfer from one account to another.
No, 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 Ted, come on.
I'm not disputing that, but I'm just saying I would consider that a raise to me because I was getting more in my take home. That's all. But what I'm...
Mr. Chair, I think we, we need to move on. Excuse me.
Commissioner Gold still has the...
I'm fine. That's, I think I made my point.
So, your point is, for clarity again, what?
Yeah. Just that, okay, we're paying 7.65% the county is in Social Security on whatever extra comes out of, of his pay raise or whatever. So, I'm suggesting that we do the 1,148 less the 7.65% Social Security that the county would have to pay. And that way, it would be a, an even Steven. That's a compromise.
Commissioner Boyce, you had, you had a comment?
So, what would that be? $1053, $1,053 and 86 cents a month.
Glad you brought...
Well, I had a little calculator here.
Glad you brought your calculator. So, Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may just clarify, so my understanding, at least, uh, Commissioner Gold, that was in the form of a motion?
Yes.
So, we're, it's, that motion has not been seconded as a...
No, but did you, I thought Commissioner Boyce raised his hand with a comment or did I miss, did I?
No, thank you, but no.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a second for that motion? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second.
Anything watered down is just another slap in the face to me, but, uh...
That motion died for lack of a second.
So...
Okay. So, it is...
Commissioner?
It's 12:17.
Could you explain the motion again to me? Because I, I, I got lost in the frustration.
Well, your call, Mr. Chair.
I think the motion was clear. The motion died for a second.
I want it explained. And that's a reasonable request.
Do you want me to proceed or?
Sure.
Okay. So, what, what Commissioner Gold had moved, her motion was, um, the, the budget, uh, that was adopted for this year included, uh, as part of Sheriff Ward's total compensation, $1,148 monthly PERS contribution. So, it wouldn't have gone to Sheriff Ward. It would have gone directly to the, to the PERS. Uh, but he retired. So, once you retire on PERS, just like my, my situation's the same, you, you no longer, the, the governing body that still employs you no longer has to pay the PERS. Actually, matter of fact, cannot pay the PERS even if they wanted to. So, so if, so the request is, transfer that $1,148, which is now just not being paid anywhere, just being held by the county, retroactive to July 1st, uh, transfer that to salary for Sheriff Ward. The comment Commissioner Gold made and, and agreed in the conversation I also had with Sheriff Ward, uh, if that money, $1,148, had continued to be paid to PERS, we would pay no Social Security tax, no other related payroll-type tax on that money. So, Commissioner Gold has suggested, well, go ahead and grant him $1,148, which netted out to...
$1,068.
Okay, $10,068.
$1,068.
I'm sorry, $1,000. Yeah, $10,000 would be great.
So, this would still be a payroll, it characterizes a payroll?
Yeah, so it'd still be a pay raise, yeah. So, he would basically get 92.4 roughly percent of, of the $1,148, which he would see in a monthly, uh, payroll check increase.
Well, I certainly apologize. And if you would, uh, put that, if it, put that motion back on the table, then, Mr. Chair, I will second it.
I just moved that we allow him the $1,148 less 6.75, 6.765
7.65.
Uh, amount for Social Security.
Second, you are a real problem solver. Thank you.
I'm just...
Any further discussion?
Just one last point of clarification. Commissioner Gold, uh, retroactive to, to July 1st?
Yeah, that's fine.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, it is 12:20. We will take a lunch recess. We'll come back at 1:30. 1:30.
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So, we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms. And it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langley's is less than 500 people. It's very small. So, we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So, we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So, we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So, now people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time. So, roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders: Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mir's, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mir's Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanis lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away. Or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rodendrins along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shiny stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves in the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature and you don't have huge numbers of people. But you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe-meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective and trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways. And we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new-designed rumble strip will be will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test with this posted speed weapon.
About weeks in Harleyville are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every second highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leening, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard: a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair? Or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing, already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common-sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
How many letters? Five letters? Just think about what I'm doing right now. Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and... y realmente construir relaciones de comunidad."
"En nuestra área, mucho de la comida que se cultiva se envía a la mercancía. Y así ahora estamos dándose cuenta de que podemos capturar parte de esa comida local que se cultiva aquí. La equipo de acción de acción local Eat Fresh ha organizado una serie de eventos de networking que unen a los productores de la área con los vendedores de la área para que podamos tener más comida local disponible para los visitantes de nuestra área. Y ahora estamos viendo más comida local en nuestros supermercados, en nuestros restaurantes y tenemos una nueva cooperación de comida local."
"Creamos una trayectoria de campo desde Bandon a Port Orford. Hicimos nueve campos de UPEC y simplemente ganó atracción y a la gente le encantó."
"Langley's es menos de 500 personas, es muy pequeño. Así que tenemos que traer turistas y estar en la trayectoria de campo, aunque solo está empezando, ha realmente ayudado a hacer eso. Realmente queremos hacerlo un destino para cualquiera. Mi mamá y yo comenzamos el campo de la dragón fly hace solo tres años. Cuando descubrí que podía cultivar semillas y convertirlas en comida, fue como, oh, Dios mío, ¿por qué no lo harías? Acabo de dejar mi trabajo diario y solo firmé el periódico para ser un co- dueño oficial del campo. Esto es lo que quiero hacer durante el resto de mi vida y cultivar con la comunidad."
"De la equipo de acción de recreación outdoor, nos dimos cuenta de una serie de mapas que muestran dónde son los mejores lugares para ir a recrear. Sabemos dónde vamos a enviar a la gente ahora y tenemos una gran mapa que muestra todos los mejores lugares para ir a ver."
"Para nosotros hacer un proyecto de mapeamiento hasta este punto es bastante impresionante. Estamos patenándonos a la espalda. No sé quién es nadie más, pero lo estamos haciendo."
"Desde ahí decidimos que había algunos lugares que necesitaban ayuda, así que nos dimos cuenta de un plan de motocicleta montaña y también trabajamos en designar una calles de bicicleta escénica estatal. La equipo de acción de recreación outdoor también estaba mirando cómo podemos mejorar el diving en escoba en esta área. Así que nos dimos cuenta de la idea para una estación de carga de escoba. Así que ahora la gente que quiere venir y sumergirse en esta área pueden sumergirse por varios días porque pueden llenar sus tanques de nuevo." "Cuando empecé el estudio de turismo rural, mi negocio de tours del sur de la costa era realmente pequeño. Y ahora hemos crecido a unos cinco o seis guías y estamos haciendo tours por todo el mundo desde Brookings hasta Cooz Bay."
"En general, el turismo está en aumento aquí. Hemos tenido un golpe de dos años y es como un resorte de aire fresco aquí."
"Mi esperanza para la área es que todavía mantengamos ese sentido de lugar."
"Amor a un lugar a la muerte es una gran preocupación que tengo y es un equilibrio. Vamos a promover el turismo, pero queremos hacerlo de una manera sostenible. Una de las mayores razones por las que esta área ha sido tan exitosa desde el estudio de turismo es la gente que está involucrada. Tenemos muchos grandes, motivados, inteligentes personas que entienden la necesidad de promover el turismo de la forma correcta y es realmente todo sobre la gente."
"Cuando vives en una comunidad rural como la que hacemos, desde Bandon hasta Brookings y estás atrapado por el dinero, las relaciones son cruciales."
"Como comunidad, creo que necesitas reunirte y averiguar qué es tu misión y metas colectivamente. Entonces puedes trabajar en grupos más pequeños sabiendo que tienes el respaldo de toda la comunidad detrás de ti."
"Mientras todo el mundo esté súper emocionado acerca de ello y pasionado por lo que están haciendo y pueden trabajar juntos, entonces todo es posible."
"Posee lo que tienes y no trates de ser algo que no eres. Va a ser difícil, va a tomar mucho tiempo, así que arrástate y solo empequeñezcáis con una mente abierta."
"¿Qué te llama a la costa de Oregon? ¿Es el surf verde y azul en un día soleado o las ondas enojadas durante una tormenta invernina agitada? ¿Preferes los coves silenciosos o los romperes poderosos que giran el arena? ¿Qué hay de las casas de arena? ¿Vienes por la corriente subida o la luz ciega para admirar las ballenas flotando por el mar o volando en el cielo?
Nine lighthouses stand Sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mir's Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second haystack rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront feel, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
All four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasita Head Lighthouse to the Sea Lion Caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end, and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this all-American road home, small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Neocante Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So you've toured nature's finest art museum, you've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Just one. No, no, he is. He's well qualified. Yeah, yeah. I'm actually going to mention in my report of bringing him in for an interview with the three of you.
Okay, we're back from the lunch break. It's 1:30. Continuing with the Curry County Commissioner General Meeting, Wednesday, October 4th, 2017. Again, it's 1:30. We're up to item, Agenda Item 10 announcements, meeting schedules. First, there's an October 11th Board of Commissioner workshop scheduled for 10:00 a.m. County lands and the Brookings Air Report and Tax Info Report, is that still? Director Hitt, is that still a good topic?
Yes, those are still all good. I do have one question about that one, as well as future workshops. It's not the historical tradition of the county. Our actual ordinance on special meetings, including workshop, doesn't address this, but my understanding is our normal procedure, although we made an exception last time at the Flores Lands Workshop, but we don't normally take public input.
Typically, correct.
Yeah, so I didn't know if that's for future workshops, if you want to stick with the old policy.
I think until we change it, we should stick with it, or we're going to really have some wild free-for-alls.
Okay, all right.
What else, what other policy doesn't mean anything?
Okay, all right. Just thought I'd ask that question.
The second announcement would be on October 18th. That'd be the next generally, general Board of Commissioner meeting is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. And on the last item, November 1st, there's a Board of Commissioner General Meeting also, again, scheduled the regular time at 10:00 a.m. And moving to Agenda Item 11, which is the Interim County Administrator Report, I'll turn it over to John Hitt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. A few items, and I'll try and stick to my five-minute timeframe here. Planned office move, just let you know that the County Assessor's Office is contemplating moving to the vacant spaces over here in this building. That allows in the County Clerk Elections Office or Section to move from the basement of the old courthouse to their current level and expand their offices, and that will be a significant benefit to Elections Time, allowing them to bring in more elections monitors, allowing them to bring in more people to count ballots because they'll simply have the room for those folks, which they don't currently now in the basement. The other benefit that will occur is better access for the Assessor's Office. The Tax Collections Office, of course, would be at the same place, so there's less issue of access for those who are physically disabled in some way or another. So we can make these moves at very minimal cost, just a few hundred dollars, which would come out of the Assessor's and Clerk's budgets. They have the money in those budgets for that. And that's, so that, that move unless you all wish to see or talk about that in a more detailed way at a future meeting. But otherwise, that move would start next week with the Assessor. Obviously, Assessor has to move first. Most of it will be done by existing staff, and then with the final move, then probably sometime in November, you know, with everything being finalized sometime in November.
If I may, one question?
Yes, sir.
What would be the approximate net, I would say probably decrease in available space in these buildings with that move?
Um...
I'm not, you know, if you don't have, I'm not...
Yeah, I don't have that number.
Just be curious because we had tried to be, you know, to lease some of it.
Right, and the feeling is, after several attempts to lease that space, that is probably not going to work, to be able to lease it. We do have more space coming available if we go ahead with the Brookings Building Exchange. Veterans would be moving down there, and then also Curry County Health lease on a part of that building expires at the end of the year, and my understanding is they do not intend to renew that. So we will still have actually a fair bit of space available, even though it'll mostly be across the street versus right here. Now, the County Assessor will not use all of this space. Probably, I think the current plan is to use about roughly 80% of it, but there would be still some office space available even in this building.
Okay, thank you.
Then County Account position, I would like to bring someone in that is a viable applicant for that position, has had a fair bit of experience in municipal accounting, as well as the formal training for that. I would do it, prefer to do it sooner rather than later. You already have on your schedule a October 11th workshop. So my question to all of you, would you be willing to have a special meeting to interview the potential? Now, I haven't checked, done all the background check yet, and we will be doing that over the course of the next few days, reference check, background check. But assuming that all comes back positive, would you be willing to consider then having an interview with that person the afternoon of October 11th? So one week from today in the afternoon as a special meeting?
I certainly would.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Boyce?
Because I would, if you all approve, I'd rather bring this person on sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. So Carolyn Johnson also asked, there is a land, she said it has to do with liquefaction, special rules, land use rules relating to liquefaction and other natural hazard dangers. That was, I guess, not finished, a special hearing that was carried forward. She would like to carry that forward to November 29th. So that would be a special meeting also, 10:00 a.m. in the morning.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yeah, that's a Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. in the morning. That would be...
Was that the one that was...
So well attended.
So, you know, we had 100 or so people?
Yes, yes, yes.
So what's the, do you know what her, what the plan is?
I don't know the details, other than that she would like, she feels that she's going to be able to finish that on November 29th and also potentially bring back the information from the workshop on the Flores Lake property.
And that's one, okay, so that's the open, that's the fifth Wednesday, so it wouldn't be a scheduled meeting at this point.
Be after Thanksgiving, yeah. So people are going to be gone post-Thanksgiving.
Actually, I've got a problem with that.
Okay. All right. We can look at it later.
Because we only had so many day, I think, there was, wasn't there some, something had to be done within a certain time?
There was a time.
Was that a different?
I believe there was a time limit, and I'm not, I don't know if, without ticking with Carolyn Johnson, when that clock stopped ticking.
Is there a chance we could do that, like, earlier?
So the other option then potentially would be, so First and Third would be the Fourth and the 18th.
Were you talking about November?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at October. Forgive me. Let's look at November. That helps. So, yeah, the other option, so we currently would be on for November 1st and November 15th. 22nd is a possibility, but that's maybe for Thanksgiving. And then the other option, I guess, if we just stick with Wednesdays, would be November 8th.
Either November 8th or the 22nd would work for me. 29th's definitely out.
Okay. Any other thoughts there on either one of those two?
He did fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, how about you?
But I would be, you know, again, with the dates and stuff, I'm assuming, because we didn't continue that to a specific date, or did we?
I don't believe you did, according to what Carolyn, her brief.
We don't want to say go ahead on a day and then find out that we...
Oh, right. No, I don't believe it was...
You did, and she has to renotice her, all, any of that stuff.
If I recall, she set it up for like the first part of November.
Yeah.
Like November 2nd, I think.
I just don't remember. I just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have? Was it for the first?
So it was continued.
To November 1st? Okay.
So...
So maybe we're okay then for the first.
Yeah, just make sure everybody's on the same.
Then, yeah, I will double check.
First with Carolyn first and then...
I will double check, and if, and if we need to do it another day, we'll shoot for November 8th.
Okay.
Okay. Which would be much preferred, I think, because that's going to be most likely a long meeting.
Right.
You don't want to put that with a general meeting.
Right.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. I would concur with that.
So I would think that you'd want to exclude the first and the 15th.
Yeah, I think...
Commissioner, August 2nd was the meeting with the Enterprise Zone with the, we had, that's when we had the 45, we had about 45 people here.
Now, that's a different, that was a different one.
No, this other one was liquefaction.
Liquification.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's the August 2nd meeting.
Okay.
Before August. Yeah, we'll get it figured out.
Okay.
So tentative, it'll either be the first and the eighth.
Stand alone or something. We don't want to include that in a general meeting.
My guess is it's going to be well-attended.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
And then I think the only thing I had, and I mentioned briefly earlier, but when we were talking about the minutes, but just to let you know, I will be working on my version of the May 3rd minutes, just to present that as an option to you, since you took it off your agenda to bring back. So we'll have the minutes as John Jesuit has done them and as you all may additionally comment.
Will that still be put on a drive so we can look at it in Word document?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. And let us know where words are.
We'll put both of them, both the current version and then my kind of abbreviated version to see which you prefer, which you think will work better for you, and opportunity to make comments before it comes back for formal approval. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner updates, first is Commissioner Boyce.
Well, I'm working with a group in Brookings, not just limited to Brookings, but it's the way it's kind of evolved here with the Chetco Bar Fire on solutions. And so we're putting, we're not ready to make a presentation yet. We did give one to the Forest Service last Friday night on some basics, and, you know, just if you talk too much about the fire, of course, it can become depressing with the amount of wildlife we lost and the water quality that's potentially going to be very negative for Brookings Harbor. I'm very concerned about that. Of course, air quality, prevention of future fires is obviously a huge one, the loss of private timber, the loss of some of the best public land in Oregon, cultural sites. Of course, we're hit very hard, the loss of homes. Somebody earlier today mentioned to me economic development, the grant they're to try and determine, and you've been working on that, which I really appreciate, with Brookings Administrator Milliman. And, you know, I, I tried to, I have to say, you know, I was in the Sheriff's Office when this fire was only five days old and was still under 100 acres, and I pleaded with the local district ranger to hit it with everything that she had. And a couple of things come out of that meeting, and, you know, it's, part of the, part of the reason we got here is because we're not managing our own lands. And, you know, one of the criticisms I had from, this goes back to the 15th, I don't need to mention any names, but one of my January 31st plans was to, on the, on the green activist groups, to ask them or to insist that they get a permit to operate, so that we'd have a $50 million bond on something like what we just went through, to the economic devastation. And I was really criticized for that. And now it looks like it was a little bit insightful, and the environmentalists are not who are battling here, but the people that would suggest to us that a charred forest is somehow good, when we, you just can't calculate the aspects of this. And so it's going to be my cause, my personal cause, to write this, and I'm not going to let the Forest Service off the hook. They are accountable, they started in federal land, and they've got to answer. And then I'm going to take on the, and I hope I get to help with the board here. I'm going to take on the activist groups. I certainly don't mean to categorize all environmental groups. I mean, I, the people I know and run with are staunch environmentalists. They want clean air, they want clean water, they want protected wildlife. But we just lost, I mean, if you just wanted to take that aspect, we just lost millions of birds and, I mean, burned alive. And I, and I hold environmentalists responsible for that, I hold the federal government somewhat responsible for that. And so as it relates to the county opposite wilderness being burned again 15 years later, the damage that did to the Illinois River, logs, big black logs floating downriver 12 years after the fire in 2014, that I've got videos of, good videos. And so we are going to have to help with solutions. We are going to be with, through the other counties I mentioned earlier, and our local representatives, local senators, certainly our national representatives. This is their chance to help rural Oregon and especially Curry County. You know, there's, there's a couple of things I could read here, and I think it might be a good idea today, but one-third of the, I think I mentioned earlier, if I didn't, or if I did, forgive me, but one-third of the lost acreage in Oregon due to wildfires was in Curry County this year. Here's, here's a group call, and this won't take very long, and I think, I hope it interests you, but RRA, Rural Resource Alliance, they tracked the success of the alternative on the Biscuit Fire, and it's, it's not a pretty picture. Nothing got done. And so naturally, there's people that are looking at Curry County saying, this what will, will be likely to happen again. Here's something I want to read throughout, I'm getting emails from all over the country, and through the coordination process, elected officials of the smallest political subdivision in the county can affect US Forest Service BLM current budget priorities. And here's something I think that is, that timber companies might, and all of us that rely on manage our forest well and doing very wise harvest. And when you say that, people jump that you're going to clear-cut the forest, and no, it's just growing so fast, we're, we're not able to take advantage of that and help manage that and make that part of our forest. So the management overhead for a typical federal project in our forest is 40 to 100%. The state overhead for the NAG Forest similar project is 15%. Private industry does, does it for 8%. So this person said, we need a car that gets better mileage. The state car seems to be the agency of use. And I think what's going to happen there, and I'm really promoting this and smarter people than me, you're going to see the states take over the firefighting now, and they're going to build the federal government, and they're going to do it for half the money, and they're going to be way more effective. And I'm very hopeful on that. Here's another one that might interest you. Acting on local jurisdiction, Doyle Shamley and others deserve credit for uncovering, studying, and acting upon information about federal jurisdiction. A resident of Patchy County, Arizona, Shamley was able to get his county to pass two resolutions through his county commissioner board in which his county asserted its constitutional right to start and manage the forest in its area. I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm simply presenting to you some options here. Here's one from our local group. We would like to go on record stating our interest and concern for all issues and activities related to road access to the Chetco Bar... Spending taxpayer dollars to tank trap or otherwise close roads, the tank trap means jerk up culvers or block them with huge rocks, whatever, because they don't have the money to maintain them, that's their, their excuse why they don't, why they don't maintain them, is needed in this fire as well as other fires past and future. Could seem contrary to the interests of the citizens of Curry County and frankly, that of the Forest Service as well. To waste valuable time and money opening these roads every time there's a fire when they could easily be left as is would be a poor choice, plus public access. Short paragraph here, large part of the Chetco Fisheries Repairian areas were dammed inside the Kamiopis Wilderness Area. Question, is the hand of man going to help creek shading now? That's why the Illinois River temperature is up so high and the fish are doing so bad. Illinois, I think I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, is, is warmer than Rogue right now, which is unconscionable. The recreation industry will be affected by the choices we make. Here's a, here's a, just a story. I'll just read you the headline, minimum suppression tactics, minimum suppression. I wonder if that's what happened on this fire, managed to extinction. We lost some incredible territory. I mentioned, knowing I let this go, I already kind of talked about it today. Here's one local person, Freedom of Information Act. This week, two good friends are now in the ICU of two hospitals with severe and perhaps terminal lung conditions. The purpose of this request is to identify how a quarter acre fire turned into 100,000 acre fire with the attendant property destruction and human impact. Couple more. Coordinate with commissioners for a united front. Other commissioners, the private timbered, timbered landowners, the people who lost homes, they should be made whole from the US Forest Service negligence. This federal method of wildfire management needs to be drastically modified. This, this guy is pretty sharp, he might sound radically himself, and environmental activism has had only negative impacts on Curry County, and you can go back to four or five fires. It has facilitated policies that have wrought only pain and suffering to the local economy in ruin and instability at every level of our communities. Government, business, and private citizens have literally been terrorized for decades with these horrible policies. One more, and I've got mountains of, some very pertinent information. How much money do you need to light on fire 1.3 million board feet each year to reduce fuels so this won't happen again? This whole idea that we have to get rid of the burden of fuels and turn it into carbon dioxide and then spend money to do it and risk prescribed burns from getting out of hand each time. The US Forest Service would need to log about 3.9 million board feet a year until they finally approach sustained yield. What are you going to do with all the money that you will get from the timber sales? How about fix the campgrounds, repair the watersheds, make oak meadows? So that's our next big battle, is to make sure that we can get in there and salvage. And I think you mentioned Administrator Head that we're going to have to do that. We basically, we don't have two years because the timber companies will, it'll, it won't be, it just won't be valuable enough because of the decomposition process. So I'm, having said all that, there are solutions, we're going to find them, and we're going to challenge the Forest Service, and they have to make this right. And they made a bad mistake, and there's no, there's no getting around that. I know they had the public meetings and they all spoke with a collective voice, and they had their stories right. And yet, I think they know that they've got to be part of the solution here. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
While you were speaking about the fire, I thought of a meeting that I just attended, and one of the big things that came out of that meeting was we've got federal regulations, but the regulations are difficult to apply to every place in the nation. Our, our area here, the trees grow much faster, we build up the fuel much more quickly, and they're not even abiding by their own regulations as far as getting rid of the amount of fuel, and that's one of the reasons we're having these big fires. So just thought I'd mention that. Also, I've been working on healthcare solutions that would be equitable for all of the county, and we're still working on that with the city, with Curry Health Network and so forth. So I'll keep you updated on that. That's it.
John?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Chairman? In regards to the, Commissioner Boyce mentioned some of the presentations that the forest departments put on, and I think they were towards the end of last week, there were four different ones. The first one was in Brookings, at Brookings High School on Thursday evening. And they did, I don't have the link, but it was on their, it's easily obtained, it was on their, their public notice flyer, where they had that and some flyover videos and so forth. But they did put the video of that meeting on the following, I think that evening or early the following morning. Assuming it's still on, which I don't know, but I would, I would expect it would be, it's well worth the time. You know, I went to the meeting, but it was well worth, just for information purposes, not to, to go to blame anybody or commend anybody, but just to hear what, you know, two sides of the story, basically, or certainly primarily the one side, but then other comments too. But it was well worth, well worthwhile. I think that's all that I.
Let me just mention one other thing. I did talk to three of the seven families that had lost their homes, and all of them pretty much had the same story that I related in that letter that was sent out by this commission. So I think there were some mistakes made. I think we could learn by those mistakes and move forward, so hopefully that will happen.
Can I ask you to give me a copy of that letter again?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, that said, I think we will adjourn the meeting. It's 1:56.
It's not going to be on the official letterhead because it's in mine.
It's okay.